Here, on behalf of the all over here is putting this be visually and uh. My name's Alan Marlborough, I'm the chair of this. And I present a project. And um. The purpose. Yeah. Got six. The purpose is. Here in Phoenix, it's a private land in Washington. And we're saying. The zone in. The zone in Congress. This is a zoning permit. And construct cell park. With eighty fifty five dollars avenue. From the Michigan four nine six three five. Title number zero five dash zero zero one. Dash two oh eight. Dash double zero. Added to interpret sections three point two eight. And two six point five of the township zoning ordinance. And an appeal submitted by tenant A T N. Of the decision of zoning administrator to issue a zoning permit. To construct the same cell park at eighteen fifty five dollars avenue, Frankfurt. President four nine six three five, passing number zero five zero zero one. Dash two oh eight dash zero zero. Do that when you call a roll.
Alan Marlborough?
Present.
Greg Wright?
I'm calling for the members of the board for any potential conflict events. Not here. We're gonna take a look at and approve the agenda, but first there is a minor correction on the agenda. Under the Smith appeal. Excuse me. Excuse me. Dropping down to supporters in the agenda. The word variance viewed by mistake. That line will read each person wishing to speak in support of the issuance of the zoning permit. We'll be given three minutes with one extension of three minutes. And the same correction is for under opposition. For anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the zoning permit. Not to the variance, so please make that correction if you would please. Uh, any questions on the agenda? Any motion to approve the agenda? Any motion?
Second.
Seconded by Greg Wright. Discussion. Call a roll please.
Alan Marlborough?
Aye.
Mr. Michael?
Yeah.
Greg Wright? All rise, welcome back. Until.
I'm asking talk to Sarah to quickly move the rules of order from speaker to speaker.
Great time tonight to hear people. To reform against the items on the agenda. There is a public comment section on this. But that is only for comment on items found on the agenda. Uh, each person making a statement, signing in. And signing people around. To intend to speak. Uh, you're not signed in, you can sign in after. Uh, each person making a statement must stand and announce their name and address. All statements or questions should be directed to the chair. Um, each person will be given a limited time to speak. Please be as specific as possible. Please refrain from repeating things in a separate form. Possible. Uh, the function of this hearing has been practiced for the more of the field, the closer. And uh.
Thanks, Tom. As you said, we moved right now to public comment, which are only for discussion items, the comment on items other than. The purpose of this particular meeting. Does anyone have any public comment to offer to the zoning board?
Yeah, I'm not fully aware of the agenda, how you're trying to do it, but I have comments to make, I don't know.
What is it regarding to?
In regards to views on that property.
Okay, that will come. Sure, thank you. Yes, sir.
The comment, um, first you specifically changed the agenda from variance, was there not variance written for this?
No, it was a zoning permit, a variance.
A variance would be needed just because of disease?
That's, that's, that's one of the many things that issues.
I'm only asking, may I slightly change the word there?
Right, right, right. All right, Tom, the good minister, the speaker's office, please.
At this point, uh, I ask anyone. That's speaking for all our guests or speaking tonight at all. If they'll stand, uh, also, you're welcome to say. You can. Raise your hand. And state. I state your name.
I have just.
Swear at my birthright, father, and mother.
Sire.
Do the closing. My best father.
He says.
That's all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Be so honored to be on your behalf.
And sir.
Thanks, everyone, I appreciate that. We can open the public portion of the meeting, I just want to make a two brief opening comments, just. It's an issue that touches everyone here. I've got seventy-three years invested consecutively in the Benzy Towne and the Crystal Lake. Many people here have the same experience. So feelings won't hide, probably well there. Understood. We need to be civil, we need to listen to each other tonight. Not interrupt, not get into repartaging. Be courteous to each other. If in the unlikely circumstance. Things get heated. I will ask. The speaker or speakers. Tell them, they say all the order, and then ask them to calm down. If things, again, unlikely. Get out of hand, we reserve the right to adjourn the meeting. If the course would be kind of productive during the trying to talk. I ask if you may follow common courtesy and listen to each other. Thank you. The first speakers. Will be people. Yes. Oh. I move to open. This meeting of the. Crystal Lake Township zoning board of the town. Call a roll.
Aye.
Yeah.
You not come up?
Yes.
Aye, thank you. Tom, thank you. The first speakers will be presenting on behalf of Mr. Smith. Over a nine-minute speaking window, with a three-minute addition at the discretion of the chair. And I just ask, as Tom indicated earlier, if you introduce yourself.
I didn't follow the partner, I'm just trying to. Just going back to Smith, I have business address of nine oh one South Park, in the private city of Michigan. Um, I'm proposing to do two things this evening, one is to touch upon the application. Uh, and flesh out a few things in that. And also to respond to a few issues that were contained in the staff report, which was circulated earlier this week. Um, in addition, the materials, I want to make sure that you have a copy of the zoning administrators', um. Written explanation of how he approached this project, which was provided to the Crystal Lake Water Chamber Association, it's been. Around February fourth of this year. And this written analysis has got prompted this appeal. It seems lost at the critical issue in this case, so this matter is related to ground lease. Uh, or what is a ground lease, which is approximately. Forty-eight years in duration if you count the various extensions. Um, and which provides a tower company with exclusive possession to a portion of Bellows Park. Is a transfer within the meaning of section three point two eight D of your zoning ordinance. The zoning administrator concluded that it was now, because title of the property was not transferred, and thus the transfer did not occur. Now, zoning administrator concluded. That title must be transferred. But the ordinance doesn't refer to transfer, by all means, it's referred to transfer ownership. What it says, and I quote, "Any publicly owned parcel. Transferred to a non-government entity shall immediately consult the zoning regulations of the dis..." unquote, that's from the ordinance. The term transfer is not defined in your ordinance. However, section one point seven A fourteen. Provides that, quote, "Any word or term. Not defined in this article shall be given a meaning of common or standard acceptance." Then it goes on, and it says, "A dictionary may be consulted." In the real estate business, uh, it's not unusual to see, um, developer using a ground lease. And that's what we have here in this instance, is a ground lease. Ground leases are typically of long duration, and the tenants' rights are roughly equivalent to owning the property. They have all the rights, they're the leasees of ownership, and yet they don't have title. There are businesses tax reasons, why developers use ground leases as opposed to transfer title. And that's what they elected to do in this instance. Because many lease arrangers are really disguised sales, the legislature in many districts treats instances as de facto transfers. So, for example, the Michigan General Property Act provides that a lease with an initial term with extensions. Which is greater than thirty-five years is considered a transfer under the general property tax act. Likewise, Michigan Real Estate Transfer Act. Defines a term transfer to make, and I'm quoting, "The conveyance of title to or other transfer of a present interest. Or beneficial interest. Or any other interest. In real property by any method." And that's a definition containing Michigan's real property tax, that's it. Now, and quote, so being a dictionary, a very abstract dictionary, provides the following definition of a transfer. And again, remember your ordinance says you can use dictionary definitions. Quote, "To make over the possession or control, unquote." Black's law dictionary, eleven, eleven edition defines the term to, as quote, "To change over possession or control of." And that's exactly what happened in this instance. Um, the possession or control of this property within Bellows Park is a transfer over to the tower company. That's transfer. The ordinance does not require the conveyance of title, and to interpret it as requiring the conveyance of title. Would add additional terms to the ordinance, which are not there. Now, I want to address a couple of issues which have arisen in the staff report. The first is the assertion that the application was untimed. And you have before you the. Zoning administrators' analysis by Tom Ronan to the watershed association. The staff report admits that neither your ordinance nor the bylaws of the D P A. Containing any deadline, which suggests that a thirty-day deadline should be appropriate for when the zoning permit was issued. Now, I suppose that's reasonable. Had a public period of access. And the public have seen or been informed of the issuance of the zoning. But that's not the case here, other than the township. Or the property owner or the town company, very few people would have gone for the process here. Um, it was not until the zoning administrator shared with. By time, that we were able to obtain a copy of this document. That we, that there was clearly a written revelation. Uh, that he considered the project exactly as it applies to the zoning ordinance. That appeared, I think, worth it. And that was a possibility. This appeal was filed on the twenty first, seventeen days later, so we submit it was timed. The staff report also suggests that Mr. Parker slipped out standing to appeal the zoning inclusion. Um, the report contends they are not whatsoever as agreed parties, as that term was recently defined, defined by the Michigan State Department. So, it's a doomed case. The thinking is that if I ran a variance of three feet on my own property. Somebody who lives three miles away couldn't be able to challenge that, they're not in the area, so that's a standard there. In Sodikat Doon's, uh. Property owner, the real estate developer, who bred. Um, and our citizens community. Here we have the true law of development within a public park. Now, arguably, every resident of the township who uses that park is directly affected by this facility. That Smith can see this tower, two hundred and fifty meters from that. Hundred fifty feet from their home, uh, clearly. Finally, the staff. Zoning committee could not, quote, "Could not interpret element forty-six point fifteen of the permit." Now, with Mr. Kachera's summary, which he provided to the watershed association. Is to be believed, and I think it is, it should be, that conclusion is inadequate and inaccurate. If you look at this report, the six books. The states did review the project through section twenty-six point seven, this conclusion wants that in for, quote, "Comply with toast of the sector." Unquote. Obviously, that's not good enough. So, anyway, conclusion. We all make mistakes. I made my share of mistakes too. But the great thing about this process is it gives us an opportunity to fix it. And you have the opportunity, this board does, to provide guidance. To the zoning administrator and to this community to ensure that this project. Is routed to the customary program of the process. Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. You will now hear, um, the veteran of the eligibility.
Good evening, gentlemen, I want to first thank you for your participation. Uh, you all know Crystal Lake Township better than anyone was doing, I'm sure. Uh, I have, uh, known Crystal Lake Township since I was three years old. And I've known it, uh, as a. Participant and, uh, individual that's enjoyed Bellows Park Beach, uh, when they had the slides and the rafts and. That swimming lessons taught to me there, it is a special, special place. And it is certainly, um, valued by you and certainly by itself and the family. Yes, Timothy Young, and, uh, my address is fifteen forty-seven Bellows Avenue. Um, I'm gonna move along quickly, I'm not gonna preiterate what, uh, Mr. Parker has stated, and I believe he has addressed rather adequately. The ownership versus, um, transfer issue, I, I would concur in that completely. I think in my materials that I've provided to you, those are outlined in, in detail. Uh, I'm gonna address the issue of, how do we get out of this when we've got. Four or five hundred thousand dollars invested in that parcel already, someone's gonna be bringing the finger, someone, as to. Whose fault it is that this all happened. Um, I'm here to tell you that it's APC Towers' fault. They, before submitting their application, have provided you all in their application with a basis for saying that they have a. Uh, an ability to do what they were gonna do on the property that they described in that application. I think I've attached that in my exhibit, they say. This is the same property conveyed to the city of Frankfurt in a warrant in a quickling deed. Dated, uh, April fourteenth nineteen eighty-seven. That is incorrect. The property was conveyed to the city of Frankfurt. Um. Back in nineteen thirty-eight, November the twenty-eighth nineteen thirty, I've attached that to my summary. Uh, in that deed, there was a restrictive covenant included. Which basically provided that the donated property was for the purpose of public use for a park named Edward H. Bellows Park. Now, what you see. Where this tower is constructed is anything but a park. It is, as you see in their application, a confined fenced area, you go down there tonight and see no trespassing sign in front of it. Uh, their application provides for barbed wire or mountain fencing area, this is not any. Bit of, uh, of the space that can be used for a park. Um, that's their fault that they didn't do an appropriate title search to determine that there was a restricted use, uh, to this parcel. And it's my belief that. We just simply say, "Look. The, the zoning ordinance requires that anyone that applies for. Uh, a permit is required to be honest and truthful and accurate in areas of all easements and. Whether they have the right to do what they're gonna do, and so it's on them to figure out if they have the right to do, they got some title insurance. And it's interesting, Mr. Mills, uh, the city said, you know, we got this kind of controversy viewing, right, APC, hold off, let's just. Wait until, don't do anything." Um, APC responded, "No, we're going ahead. We'll put this tower up at midnight because we don't want anyone telling us what to do." When this issue of this deed that they had not turned up in their title work became aware, they became aware, so. Um, we tried to, the city tried, and they didn't care, so this is not APC. They go back, they sue their title company, whatever those costs are, it's on them. They misrepresented the application, their right to build on this park. They had no right. It was restricted for public park use. And I, along with Benny and the city and township, don't value that use that we have enjoyed over all our lives. Um. In addition to that, I think I would also. Address the issue of that memo that was referred to by Mr. Parker, prepared by Mr. Kachera. Uh, I would also say that if you read that memo carefully. Uh, I think. The zoning administrator, he seems like a great guy, but he was just not understanding. Uh, what was at stake in terms of this issue, and so because he didn't understand, or had an incomplete understanding. Uh, he went ahead and, uh, notified or contacted the, uh, his attorney, the township attorney. So if you look on attachment nine, that's. I think in the second tab of chapter four. If you find that. That is a communication between Mr. Kachera and. The township council. And in that, he says, "Look, this tower's going in the R one district." It does not allow towers or communication towers. And, um, and so he was wondering whether it would be permitted, and then he went on to discuss section twenty-six point five, I'm not gonna give him that right now, but in the end, he says. Uh, "So, does the override of R one zone make tower permitted, uh, permitted use?" He's asking you to turn. Uh. "I think yes," he says. Therefore, the tower is permitted, end of story, that, that was his position back in August of ninety-four. The, Mr. Homier responded to. "I don't disagree with your summary below, however, I would just add that section three point two eight of the Crystal Lake zoning ordinance. States that all government-owned land are exempt from zoning ordinance." Which is what Mr. Kachera then relies upon to say, "Oh, this is a fait accompli, a done deal, I don't have any control." So. What the attorney then says, "Because this is still owned by the city, it's okay." Um, I'm not, I have great regard and respect for Foster Swift, dealt with him my entire career in legal career in Madison. Uh, but that was false, wrong information for all reasons, Mr. Parker, I'll, and it was what we. Itemized, Chair, and say, "Well, you really don't have any control today, I don't have any choice." So. That is unfortunate, but I think you have an out. And you can go to APC and say, "Look, you provide false information on your. Uh, application, because of that, we are not going to. Uh, or you can, you know, vote the ordinance, that's up to you." Um, see, so much to go over, and I think it's all in my materials. Um, I just want to say that. This is a very important piece of property, I'm not against cell powers, I'm not against better cell reception, I might say that I've never had any. Uh, cell problems, living a couple hundred yards from this tower, I mean, I don't know what the need is, but be that as it may, I'm not against that. What I am against is putting a tower in a R one district when it's not. And so, I, I do believe that in terms of. Where we go, I think there's also in terms of spots, issues of whether we were a agreed party. Um, I have attached to my. Exhibits, uh, articles, summaries, I have a realtor, a realtor's. Letter saying that it has diminished my value, if you look at the articles, uh, when that tower went up, it's. Is that one of the ones? If I might just to think. The articles I've attached into, in the, I think, tab five, you can see where my house is located. It is, um, about. Four hundred yards from this tower. Uh, statistical studies show that if your house is within. Uh, point or seven twenty meters, or it's, this tower's within sight, there's a certain depreciation in value of the property. That's probably with the Smiths and with our property as well. I believe, uh, we're a agreed party, uh, we have unique positions in terms of this tower. Uh, I'm not saying anyone's guaranteed to a clear or obstructive view, like, that's not it. But that, that certainly is part of it, but we, we believe that that tower is put where it's put. Without the zoning ordinance. Start asking you to enforce ordinance. I'm looking at the preface of your zoning ordinance, and I'm just gonna take. Second to say, "These ordinances are to promote the public health, safety, general welfare. Uh, provide air, light, secure quality, encourage the use of the land in accordance with their character and adaptability. To limit the improper use of the land, to conserve natural resource, to do all the we need to be doing in this community." Um, this tower could have been put by the cemetery, I don't know why it wasn't, I think some communication with Mr. Kachera. He reached out to APC, they never got back, I don't know why. Uh, but. I don't know all the politics going on within the city and the township, but I am of opinion that that tower could be easily placed in the cemetery. You could be getting the rent, you could be getting the three hundred dollars per inch to put on that tower, I don't know why, not. But that's not me, so. I am, again, requesting that this permit be revoked, and I would again, ask you to look at the delay. Issues, I outlined those in my response brief summary. Um, it's all, it gets to notice, we not have, didn't have any notice, Mark, it's gonna be, and I think Mr. Kachera. Affirms that in his letter to the watershed association. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Kachera will now offer his staff report.
Uh, yeah, if I were to sort of build my mind behind our, our seat. Um, we have some words to leave, I know you.
Mike Seaborn, chief of, well, Frankford, the only thing I can say I can't go with for this, and I'm just gonna talk about. What I do know, and that cell service in that area is cloudy. I know people from emergency services have a difficulty, you know, paying, trying to monitor the services. I radio communications is cloudy in that direction, so that's all I wanted to basically say is. Spot here. What's going on? I'll hold it still. Thank you.
I also ask, uh, the vice of duty, to, uh, turn, how we went to.
Back to the chair.
Yeah.
Good evening, sir. Um, I realize after sitting through the.
Um, I realized after sitting through the, the first two statements, that it gives more about the permit and application than it is about the necessity of a tower. I think people can agree, but it's not about that. But I was asked to speak, um, regarding my role and what the South Halloween's for, for the, um, location. And I found, uh, Chief Seater home to say that, uh, one, I'm not for or against. I have a, a second home in, in Central Ontario. And if someone were to tell her, I would sympathize and be completely devastated, um, as to, uh, the view. Um, the two things I'd talk about really quickly are connectivity and redundancy. Um, people are, you know, moving the area, they work from home, they, um, we get that. I had the word in my head and now I'm choking. Um, the infrastructure to complete some of those texts, which unfortunately ends up being another part. Uh, we, we need it for radio communications. A lot of our home alarms are, are web-based, cellular-based, um, cell phones, of course. And then a lot of the equipment that the fire departments use, use that. The topography of our area, obviously limits that, I know, because I've already been working through a project on, on the tower in the city. As far as, is there already coverage and should there be more coverage? I, I've learned just from the northern ice storms that sometimes we need, we need extra. But again, I'm not for or against. And I realized after listening to the both sides, that it's not really about if it's a necessary element. It's about the process that is followed. So we start by, for another time, another time.
Thank you. Safe travel, both of you.
Process. Let's go to the limited point. Standing to appeal is also discussed regarding the concept of a agreed party and what is required to pass the test for a agreed party. Um, finally, um, you have my findings here relative to, now, how highly the, the appeals were provided. Um, that no damages have been claimed, uh, specifically in any, in either of the appeals. Um, that's in subsequent documentation. Um, the article three twenty-eight is explicit and unambiguous as to whether the, um, property, um, when leased, is applicable to the zone. And I guess I would say I would just give the example with regard to leasing, that, um, it's similar to an apartment. Uh, you can lease an apartment year after year after year after year, but the owner of the apartment won't own the land, the building, he will be free to sell that building. Uh, in most leases for apartments, the owner of the building is allowed to enter that apartment. So there's a, there's a similarity here that no ownership is actually going to transfer. It's, um, a piece of property that has been leased, uh, for use, likewise in the party. Again, um, I've made recommendations that based on new statements for the appeals wouldn't be denied. That's my recommendation to avoid zoning appeals. If you have any additional questions, um, we have to answer them this time.
What would happen if the submitter did?
Well, uh, quite frankly, I think what would happen is APC would, would go to court. And, uh, I'm not quite sure who would go to court. I believe maybe after the lease, the city of Frankfurt would be required to go to court for it. I'm not quite sure how that, I'm, I'm not legal, we go in that regard. But anyway, I would be, somebody would go to court and allow the zoning ordinance for it. Article three forty-eight, sales to the parish. And, um, for, for the language, that is, uh, language most popular.
May I ask Mr.? Can I ask you any question? May I ask Mr.?
Absolutely. I think, um, APC would be notified by the, the township that the information they provided in their application was incorrect. It was, it was misleading. And so I believe, quite frankly, I mean, the zoning ordinance, their provision of the ordinance that says any, um, yeah, it pays with false statement or misrepresentation of fact in the application materials, but permit can be revoked. I mean, that's clear. It's their fault. And then they would go and sue the title insurance company that said, everything's fine, go ahead and build. Uh, it's not, and shouldn't come back on the township. Now, they could go back to the city, but the city's basis is very clear in what it says. And it says, you are not allowed to do anything unless you have an appropriate permit to do so by the township. That's why it's rather confusing when you look at, um, what's happened here in some of the answering material. Mr. Kachar just said, look, you don't need to apply a permit. This doesn't matter, you can do anything you want. And that's not, I don't think, what the ordinance required. I believe what's happened is that they are subject to the ordinance and they wanted to build where they needed to build, they needed to meet those requirements. I might just add too, they can file another application for a permit and go through that process. And maybe they would succeed, I don't know. We just have to see.
Tom, I guess I'll ask you, um, can I, can I apply any connection in the building, the issues that are not in the city? Do you have any other twenty or thirty?
Well, uh, yeah, this has been private property. Uh, for instance, I would try understanding that the APC has more approached a private property owner to prepare it. I don't quite remember his name.
What do you think?
And that, that, um, he was about to go sign the lease.
No, no, no. No, he just listened. I said, I, I, I actually, oh, famous thing that I could, I could, thank you.
Anyway, uh, had, had gone forward with the private property owner, then yes, the process would have been, would have been different, okay? Uh, but given the requirements of the ordinance, the stated requirements of the ordinance, um, because the, the, this is government owned property and with the ordinance they are exempt.
Um, I know you have some discretion when you're making that decision. I still don't know, almost planning commission could, uh, take any action if, if the city were to succeed or towards this, not permanent. Where's our authority?
Yeah, none of this comes into question. Had it been on private property, the, the planning commission would have been involved for a couple of actions, except for this special situation.
I think if I might add, I mean, Mr. Kachar's position is they're, were exempt, they're exempt. They can build on the city owned property and whatever they want to build. But it's interesting that the city and APC has taken a different position and said, no, we're not exempt, we're applying for a permit. And that's been referred to in various communications. So I don't know where the disconnect is here, but they're obligated to, it's not an exempt. Uh, they're not, I, I think we could all take that to a ridiculous conclusion. Say just because they own property, they can put a, um, nuclear waste dump right there? No. Some of these kind of, we'll revisit these, have, have question for them.
I guess I would just go with what I'm saying, if there is an element of, um, health and safety for the community, uh, because this goes extent of one of the reasons for this, and I know from personal experience because I have property in that area. But cell towers, um, uh, the education center is very, very poor, very spotty and very sketchy. And these days, the, most people, uh, come to this area, uh, use cell towers opposed to landowners. And the fact is, we do no law or will grant landlines in this area. Thank you. We had a question.
It would be applicable to, in the city or the city, they do too. So it wasn't even a surprise.
All right, now we're going to switch gears a little bit. We're going to be here for the supporters. Please. Please can get, yes, sir. Oh, hold on one second. When I talked about supporters, we're talking about people wishing to speak in support of the issuance of the zoning permit. And where we stand right now, that's a zoning permit was issued. The first people speaking will be those speaking in support of that receipt.
This is someone in the hall.
Okay. Well, let's start with this. What?
Did you clarify the degree of the permit issued?
Yes. Correct. Correct. All right. Hi, everybody. The negative sometimes hurt the eye of love.
See, that's the same thing here on behalf of APC. So first and foremost, I'm not gonna nitpick the timing thing, the shot clock and the more technical things. I'm gonna throw the law at the first. So first and foremost, both of their appeal applications, I believe, have the same three point eight. And that's the ordinance that we follow, that is the ordinance that we want to approve, that we got approved. And with that said, with all of the government owned land, that we use by rights in the district, we wish air location. The appeal stopped there, but one of them said, dot, dot. Well, if we read the rest of the sentence, it shall be used in a manner to the program by government entities to own the land. Pretty clear comment, why the federal motion. Permit was not issued half everything, then when it had, there's been a property diligence. All the conversations that kind of hear people nitpicking and kind of saying their opinions are, that is the jurisdiction being their part in that, of those issues that go permit the type of property. It feels the correct conclusion. Additionally, both, both of the appeals kind of emphasize that it's unclear whether the whole governmental system township or all other, there's, it's not, uh, sort of very clear, all government entities. And even also, one point seven eight specifically states that when the ordinance is referring to only Crystal Lake Township, you're gonna use the word township, that is not the word that we, we said all government. So I think that really should help involve a lot of confusion, a lot of comments. I hear about, you know, variance with the special use permit. Like, no, it was a permit issued properly under the ordinance and properly under three point eight. Additionally, I'm gonna cut a little bit on the discussion I heard about transfer. So once again, kind of a half. You know, if you wanna say we should use the word that a common person, when a common person thinks that a lease that they transfer ownership of a property, you know, they have to use the proper definition. Getting into the lease about the sky sale. I'm not really sure why the portion of the sky sale. Well, that whole conversation completely, completely missed the sky part. The sky part is where at the end of the lease, the ownership of the property transfers to the tenant, especially being a sky sale with the lease payment being the sky ownership. That's not a decision, but that goes with everything. Also, completely missed the portion where it's only a small part of the parcel. We're not taking all of the entire parcel, they did a small portion of the parcel. So thank you once again for the opportunity to come out tonight. And I trust the board will properly review the initial plan.
I guess one question to go ahead.
My name is John Crane. I've been willing to dial this for a week. During the event, we're not gonna have any options, especially if I, if dialogue is going to happen. We let it happen. Who will answer any questions when there is to?
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in support?
Yes, sir. Uh, being able, my name is Wallace and we're in the city. And lots to say, obviously, there's a lot of information here. Um, well, I do appreciate you letting me come present to the zoning board of appeals tonight on this important issue. Um, I'd like to, as Mr. Crane did, start a little bit with some of the discussion points, um, that my colleagues at bar, um, offered. Um, I would start with the transfer question. I'm the one who drafted the lease, it's not transferring the property. We control the property, we'll continue to control the property if they, uh, buy it, unfortunately. It's non-transportable. So, um, the statements on that ones sort of stand for themselves. Um, I think from an initial point, there were discussions about court. And I think, you know, to the extent that anybody is worrying about what would happen if we go to court, the very first things that they're gonna talk about are standing and the timeliness of the application. So when you're considering this, you really need to consider the requirements and the statements that your zoning administrator property in terms of how zoning, uh, how timeliness and standing for zoning decisions like this is typically handled. Um, the first thing I think that would happen actually though, uh, to, uh, Mr. Wright's point, uh, if the permit is revoked this evening, I think the first action would be you challenge that revocation. Because what I can tell, the basis of the revocation would be that there's been quote unquote misleading or false information presented, which is fully disagree with that statement. Um, I haven't seen any misleading or false information presented. Um, what has been discussed is an alternative interpretation of language that's in that old deed. Um, as attorneys, we can all disagree on what reasonable interpretation of that language is. I think it's not misleading and it's not false information. To present an alternative interpretation that doesn't support the conclusion they'd like to reach. So I'd like to just carefully consider the fact that if you were to decide to revoke the permit, that would probably get tossed pretty quickly on the basis of the fact that it has not been a misstatement of false information presented, um, as far as I'm aware, by the power of law. Um, there was a lot of discussion about discussions between Mr. Mills, the superintendent for the city, and APC. Um, I would just ask you to restrict any reconsideration of such conversations. Actually written documents, not oral representations of those statements made by interested parties at this hearing. Um, I would support, obviously, Chief Seater home and Administrator Hooters' positions as far as the need for the tower in this area. Understand also is that the tower application materials they provided to you, um, included a map showing the lack of coverage in this area. And then with the addition of the tower in this area, how that would bolster that coverage. Um, again, this goes back to the deed, but, uh, this deed was considered by the city because it is for a public purpose. The, none of the city officials are, obviously, can really profit from this. This is not a private enterprise for the city. The city has had complaints for years about cell coverage in this area. Its own staff, obviously, the fire department has had issues with that coverage in that area. And there's, there's, uh, I have one. Speak if you don't have one. Um, so they have. But, um. All right, well, thank you, Dan. I just, um, appreciate your time.
Yeah, you're welcome. Can I finish? We're done. Thank you very much for your time. Any others, what else to speak in favor of the?
I'm Elizabeth Rogers, and I live very near where the cell towers been going up. Uh, Corwin, what was speaker? Nervous. And my idea is very simple and very disorderly selfish. Um, my cell phone service is kind of lousy, and I'm hoping that it will improve quickly when that cell power is constructed, and I hope it will be. Um, there's been some discussion of radio frequency radiation coming from this tower. Um, and I wonder how many of you who are owners of the tower, use cell phones? Um, because those all emit that same radiation, very damaging. If you hold the cell phone up to your ear, that's a lie. Um. And so I, I, I think at a distance from the cell tower, um, that radiation will not be as harmful as using a cell phone all the time, which most of us do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the issuance of zoning permit? Yes.
I have to preface, I have an employee at the township, and also the president is on Thomas Road. I think the city did due diligence, they had public meetings to get input on the cell tower. Triple A Township has in their newsletter, and then has the president. When there's no power, we are, we have nothing. We have nothing, no radio, no TV, no cell, and if there was an emergency, if we had a heart attack, we'd be dead. Because we should have reached nine one one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the issuing of the zoning permit? All right. We're going to move on to those people who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of the zoning permit. Ten minutes, three minutes, to that extension of three minutes of discretion of this here.
Well. Um, I'd like to show, I'm back in the agency, I'm a physician, I've worked locally for six years, but I've been in the area for twenty three. Um, I've also worked at Paul Oliver in the emergency department, so I'm very well aware of the need for connectivity. Um, this is the view from our house, we've got a rapid ship in front of our house, and I'm going to pass that down so that you can all take a look. So when people say you're materially affected by that, um, the answer is yes, of course, we have an entire seller house there. Um, first off, I'm going to address the issue of solar extension. There was an option to put an eighty five foot cell tower disguised in a tree in the graveyard adjacent action to our property, five plus for us. It would have been out of reach of everybody. Um, they wouldn't have seen it, it would have been disguised, and it would have given all the cell coverage that was needed. So you wouldn't have had to violate zoning rules, laws in order to put this up. It would have gone into Crystal Lake Township property and would have been available to end up providing the cell coverage that everybody desperately wants, and I understand that Thomas Road is formal, it does need, but nine one one is actually available to anybody. Nine one one goes into assembly, so when people say they're happening nine one one, I think that's untrue. Um, I've worked in the emergency room, I understand the need for all of this, I live locally, I have people knock on my door for emergencies. So, believe me, um, I understand the need for better cell coverage, and, but you can't break the law in order to get the cell coverage. Additionally, this property is zone R one, and nobody's really defined what R one is, it's residential property. It was gifted by the Bellows family, and it was for Kirkland, and it's R one. If you wanted to put a cell tower on it, it should be industrial or commercial property. It needed to be rezoned, it should have had a rezoning meeting to rezone the property, make it appropriate. Then it would have gone to a public meeting and a special land use permit for a hundred and ninety five foot tower, as we concede. The problem is, they didn't go through the proper channels to have this cell tower there. If they had, you know, I mean, we'd all have to live with this, right? But really, they nefariously slid this through while nobody was watching. So that's that. The other issue is, as far as the title work that was done by APC, Brian ended up getting the nineteen thirty eight signed deed that APC never had, never had. So when they're relying on title work that APC provided, it wasn't in there. So they don't have the title work from nineteen thirty eight, they've got an unsigned piece of paper and something from nineteen eighty seven. Mr. Kirk did an amazing job of getting the survey and the title work and putting this all together, and APC doesn't have any of that information. None of that has been live on. Can I, can I have some more time, please? Thank you. What I'd like to address is thirty day window for appeal. This is a game of catch me and who can, there was no public notice of zoning administrators of referral of the tower, and no public input. Are we to assume that the record eagle, um, October, uh, was public notice because there wasn't any? Um, you know, this is what public notice looks like, we got this in the mail about this meeting. Nothing was ever sent out about the tower. Uh, the first we noticed was construction vehicles. I think you've confused background signatures of documents with public notice. There's no ability for anyone to know who created the signature without a FOIA, which is under the lease. Crystal Lake Watershed Memo was the first public notice that was in response to me going to the news media. To the zoning board, we cannot merely excuse Crystal Lake Township's involvement in the cell tower secondary to the city of Frankfurt's decision. Please do the right thing and serve your residents and neighbors. Mr. Cussera said he had no choice but to sign, but he did have a choice and signed out on the zoning recklessly and without any consideration of actual zoning law. He told me they met most of the requirements, you have to meet all of the requirements in order to pass zoning laws. He's, this is not how zoning law works, and you have to meet all the requirements. This will forever affect property values and the integrity of Bellows Park. Because of this, Crystal Lake Township's lack of communication, we stand here at this time. The responsibility of this falls squarely on Crystal Lake Township, who is a taxpaying residence. And descendants of the Bellows family are here because what was passed was wrong. Mr. Cussera and Crystal Lake Township's lawyers, reasoning is wrong and will adversely impact us for multiple generations. We've all gone to great sacrifices to be here tonight, uh, financially, as far as like people coming and, and from traversing having difficulty in flying in, and that's because we, we feel strongly, but we're also right. This should have been rezoned, but they wanted to put that there. It's very simple, you don't put a skyscraper on residential property. You, I mean, if you wanted to do that, then you could rezonate, and they didn't do that. So please realize that there was an alternative site that could have provided all the coverage that was needed. And, and this is an abomination of the original intent of the Bellows family for this property. Thank you.
Hi, Mercedes Joan, fourteen eighty three Bellows Avenue. Oh, Mercedes, I know, it's long, it's like the car Mercedes, young. Thank you. Mm-hmm, fourteen eighty three Bellows Avenue. So a couple of things I'd like to address, uh, that got said. One is, um, the discussion between Mr. Wright and Mr. Cussera, like, what can we do? Who owns this, it's city owned, we have no right over it. If you had no right, you had no right to issue a zoning permit. If they are exempt, your action here is to have them revoke the permit and have them request a letter of exemption. If you have no jurisdiction over that application, you have no zoning authority, and the applicant is exempt, you revoke the permit and you grant a letter of exemption. When you grant a permit, which if you look at the memo to the Crystal Lake Watershed Association, once you make the decision to actively issue a permit, you are saying under section, article fourteen, that you comply one hundred percent with the zoning laws. You can see the anomaly here. So if you're confused, please look at that section, it's in our article, a zoning permit signifies you need all the requirements. So, you also asked what would happen if we went and we said APC Tower missed this restrictive covenant deed, which they were notified about, and which they clearly did not include, because their application to you included a lease with amendment A with a nineteen eighty seven unrestricted deed, no restriction at all. However, Frankfurt said to them, look, I had, I, I don't think we got quite the tone of their response, let me read it to you. They asked them, hey, look, we have some questions about deeds, people are saying that we know this was donated as a park. We don't think your title work is correct. So they came back to Frankfurt, and let me read it to you. I understand why you're asking us to slow down. I've asked our team to review the title work one more time, but yeah, they literally used this work. But yeah, the title company and the attorney reviewed this the first time around, and we didn't think anything could prevent the tower. I also know plenty of times in the past where we've had folks tell us we can't build the tower due to a deed restriction, only to discover later that they were interpreting the deed incorrectly. They, this was a very dismissive response. Not only that, let me tell you what happened when Frankfurt asked them to slow down. And everybody in this room who lives close by knows exactly what happened. They went on an expedited work order. Okay, and then let me, and then what happens if you ask them to revoke? Is that you revoke it and you simply ask them, say, look, you missed this critical deed with the park restriction that was legally filed, it wasn't even found until in February. Their title company is responsible for this. So you ask them to revoke and resubmit. Does that restrictive deed affect their use on the land? That's up to them, not for you guys to decide, but they need to turn an accurate application. If they're still exempt, you don't issue them another permit, you issue them a letter of exemption because you have no jurisdiction. If this is totally out of your jurisdiction, it's not in City of Frankfurt's jurisdiction either. It's outside of city limits. Their zoning laws do not apply. If their zoning laws did apply, they could only build a cell tower in the industrial district. Did they follow the good neighbor policy also? If there's any question that Crystal Lake Township has jurisdiction, zoning jurisdiction, look at the news articles that it says, we cannot build this tower without Crystal Lake Township zoning authority. And it's all over the news. And in fact, in the latest one regarding the news of this appeal, Josh Mills says, we receive Crystal Lake Township zoning authority and apply to everything. So if you, it's, I think the articles are in, are in your binder, if you'll believe me, but they're in the record paper, I'm not making that up. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. He is, I'm Terrence Michael. I'm, I'm the sheriff's side character. And I'm here because it's my family that gave this property to the city of Frankfurt solely for the purpose of recreation of the citizens of Frankfurt, not to be developed for any future. My relatives be turning their grave, sort of what's going on right here. Be very disturbing. Uh, this was given to the city in the name of my great grandfather, Elwin Douglas. And my grandmother, Ruth Bellows, was one of the signers on this, along with her sister Rachel Alvaro. And I never knew my grandmother, she died a little torn, but I did know my Rachel briefly, and I knew Alvaro quite well. They would be very, very angry over what is going on right now. Because they gave that property for the use of the people of Frankfurt to recreate, not for the city of Frankfurt to use to make money off of the commercial development. So this is a very disturbing issue. And I'm one of three remaining members of my family still living. And I discussed it with my cousin, Rowan, who lived down by Detroit on the way to the city tonight, he's very angry with it too. So it totally goes against what this family believed in and what their intent for this property is. And, um, another point that I would just like to bring to you, I served on the Frankfurt Fire Department for eight years. So I contest what's being said about the need for that property, for communication out there. Yes, if they're not putting in phone lines, then that's an issue now. But, and I served for eight years on this fire department. Also, I was paramedic serving downstairs, I worked in Oakland County, City of Bayak, and also in Noriaville County, before you bring my back. So I'm well versed on emergency services. And the emergency service, you do not rely on a cell phone. So I detest some of that information. Yes, it's empirical, if people be able to communicate when they need help, but I know fire departments, EMS do not use cell phones. But, uh, mainly I'm here because this goes against what my family intended, that's the reason I came tonight. The voice and opinion representing my family. And they would be very horrified as to what is taking place with that property. It's intended for recreational use only. Not, nothing else.
Thank you, thank you, Phil. Yes, sir.
I just want to piggyback on Terry's saying. Ryan Smith, thirteen sixteen, Alabama. What Terry's family did wasn't yet, and it's not abused just this one time. This is a, the second time I know it's been abused by the city. There's a portion of the property that was sold off years ago, maybe, I don't know, twenty years ago. I'm a lifelong resident here, my family's generation's here, and that property, again, it was sold off. A portion of that for profit should never, ever happen. It was a gift, not for profit. So now we're in round two. What is this cell tower doing? It's, again, it's for profit for the city, which is BS. That, there's restrictions, the Michael family almost took fifty four years ago, but they probably financially, whatever the reason, they didn't. That part, and Dean, you can, you can attest this, it had a store on it, it had a lifeguard on it, it had a building in it, that had a hair tape in it, in fact, it was not fortified, which was in part of the deed. It was restricted that, that part was supposed to maintain, if the city has done any of this? Look at this part over the years, it looked horrible. And now I see they, they tear the part of the beach and rip up the grass and clean sand out, fine, perfect. But the city has not done a great job in this, or in Terry's project, following what is in that deed. Couple things. The Todd that lives right next to me, his address is four seventy nine South Shore. This is from Todd from the years. I'm writing this to express my backing for the appeal, contesting for the approval of the cell phone tower at Bellows Park. I understand that the tower's construction is violating the original nineteen thirty eight deed from the Bellows family, which prohibits commercial development. Recently, I was informed of this project, and being a homeowner and a resident near the Bellows Park for one decade, my primary concern is the potential health risk, the decrease of my property values, and the ruining of late years on Chris Lloyd, not an office, Chris Lloyd. the decrease in my property values, and the ruining of late years on Crystal Lake, not enough, Crystal Lake. In light of these concerns, I strongly contend that this project should not benefit and that it should be dismantled at the builder's expense. I have one more second. Dennis Henheiser could not be here tonight, he carried his behalf of wealth. Dennis said his property value is gone down immensely. He was a realtor, and he's, he talks about his community area and like, trying to resonate. So you can, you can understand a couple of the people that live right next to this. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak?
Yes, sir. My name's John Brunner, four six seven East South Shore five. I have the closest house to the tower that's being constructed. It's not in this picture, it's where this clump of trees is right here, it's the Black House. I know everything that goes on in the park. I'm there, I'm there with my seven children. Every summer, we've been coming up here for forty-three years. My grandfather went to summer camp up here, my parents have a place, my sisters have a place, and this is, this is our favorite spot in the world, we love it. I've got a couple of things that I want to give you. The first is a letter from my real estate agent, and she's been selling houses up here for a very long time. I'd just like to quote a couple of things out of her letter. The property values, the perception alone could deter potential buyers, drive demand down, often depress home values for families that have invested in this neighborhood with the exception of safe, peaceful environment. These are not just market fluctuations, they're real losses for homeowners and longtime residents. Our community deserves thoughtful planning, the park prioritizes health, safety, and homeownership stability. Okay, so I'm concerned not just for, for my house, but all the property around there. And I've already been looking into selling my house because this thing is monstrosity. The health effects of this, and I have seven children, eighteen-year-old all the way down to a ten-day-old. I drove up here to kind of talk to you guys because I'm very concerned, especially with children. There are a ton of children at this park. Swimming lessons, bike riding, my seven children live in the shadows of this tower that is emitting RF radiation. Okay, another, another piece that Mercedes gave me was this article twenty-six, which says you need a five hundred eighty-five foot separation from the tower. Okay, so my house isn't even in here, but Todd Whitman's house is, and it's only four hundred and sixty-six feet wide. Okay, so there's another issue. The health, it doesn't make sense from a health perspective, it doesn't make sense from a legal perspective, it doesn't make sense from an environmental perspective. I'm not sure if it makes sense at all, it's hideous, it's an eyesore, eyesore on South Shore. And I think, I think the lawyers have everything covered in terms of the fine details, but it's ugly, it doesn't make sense. It will affect my family, one of my daughters has seizures, we try and keep all the electromagnetic frequencies in our house down. We don't have Wi-Fi in our house currently up here because we want to keep everything as low as possible. And I think when people come up to Crystal Lake, they'll say, "Hey, you know what this place really needs? It needs more cell, cell towers, we need more cell phones, we need more trees, we need more fun, we need more great service workers, we need more restaurants, we need great things in our community. And we don't need things like this that are only making twelve thousand dollars a year for the city of Frankfurt at the expense of my family and our community, this just doesn't make any sense." So I appreciate your time, I've just got a couple, pardon me, just want to give you guys a couple of these letters as well. Thank you very much, and I only have one copy of how close my house is to the tower, but I'll leave that into, and this is just a formal letter of awful construction for Bellows Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Well, I just reiterate to her, safety of children and their growing minds. And the families that use the property, oh, excuse me, Robin McKenzie, fifteen fifteen Bellows. And I was, I ran the store in summer, and I met my husband, and he was like, "I'm there on the beach." So I was fifteen and he was driving the fifty-five down the road to, so this has been, this has been our, our life too. And I, we have ten grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. And just aside from good views and property values, the safety of their growing brains in our community is important. To have that going over and into their brains is sad.
Thank you, guys.
Everyone, yes, ma'am?
I'm not a citizen in law at all. I love to do my own things, and I love biological things, and I love, and I love. Oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Margaret, this is my grandmother, and I have a house that's here on Martin Drive, but I have products that I've had down on Thomas. Guess what? Lots over, it's kind of enough. It's not that I'm opposed to having cell phone coverage, and here's the time we've had to walk and lean off the board, but it's a problem. But I am more upset about the fact that something went through, which was a little bit in gray zone of being the right thing to do, and nobody stopped it, nobody had anything like this. And I think it's more important, especially today, looking at what's happening on the national level, somebody gets an idea, they just ramrode through. I, I don't, I don't like that, I like, I, I've been the one who's been coordinating the swimming programs down there the last four summers for children. Great, very well received and has some wonderful progress. Thankful, I am to the Frankfurt City to let us use that beach and ensure us. I'm grateful, and I think those parents are very thankful. Anyway, so my attic is two, uh, two, there's a corner with bells and Bellows, and then there it is, and one, and then there's me. I have no intention of selling that, that land, given to me by my parents, when they went into the Peace World. They didn't lose anything, and that's done. It's pretty wonderful. But I'm more upset about how people can ramrode through. And when somebody has to put the tower up in the middle of the night, that's a clue. They think it's probably not right, they're hurrying out and get it done, and then, and then we rip up. But it's done in the ground. And I think there is lots of land that served the population with cell phones, okay? This doesn't have to be, I know I'm supposed to be a car, I'm a biologist. I live in a park.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Mark Henheiser, home I grew to sell, my uncle. Okay, so that's how far I lie. Probably, if you have given the address, give it seventeen ninety Bellows. And southeast corner of Thomas and Bellows. That driveway, we, we would be looking right at a firewater fence. Right now, that driveway, I didn't drive over there, I'm on my way here tonight. I'll bet you that driveway's washed out, it's probably washing down the road, across the road into my land, and probably right down into Crystal Lake. Because it's an untrunk drive. I do, told Todd before, but obviously he didn't pay very close attention to that either. I've been approached by American Power several times, solicited through garbage mail, both email and paper mail, to put a tower up on the property. And I actually bought it all. But my brother, who's Dennis Henheiser, five five seven, um, you know, convinced me that it was a stupid idea. And on top of that, above the same apartment, I came in, inquiring about just putting the driveway into my lot. And I was told that I couldn't do, I couldn't put a driveway in unless I had a building. But my driveway was rent to baby trucks and where this thing is. And I grew up here, grew up on Bellows, and swimming lessons and, 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 and. This was the first piece of property that I bought, and I didn't even have any money that spring to buy this because I wanted to be focused on the ready. Now we've got a cell tower that's encasing the health, and it does. The idea that you can't get cell service, I did it there, standing there now, get it down to five five seven, get it on top of the hill. It's weak, shit. And when this tower went in, I did, I did see, I, nobody, nobody contacted me. I was also told to get, I would need a zoning variance, which is, you know, I accepted not to properly cross the street because it means everything, or you're going to leave the tower to begin with because of the deed. I was told I'd need a variance and everything else. But when they were putting this in, the cable company, I believe it's Terry Line Cable that did all the, doing the fiber optic for Benzey County. They've run a cable red line when they had a big school sitting on my property for weeks. And I thought that when these guys, you know, after their lawyers told me they could come in and they started just whacking freaks and stuff, I thought it was probably, it was some kind of cable issue. So the idea that can't get nine-one-one, never mind it, it is satellite, the number two, with this brand new cable there, you can just get cable from. So that, that, the idea of poor communication is a non-issue, and it's fabricating. Because, I mean, they're self, they put that fiber optic right down Thomas, hook up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
I know, Panies, Panies, I'm sorry, Panies, fourteen eighty-three Bellows Avenue and seventeen thirty South Street. Sorry, I've written it so that I can stay on track. I have a question, there is certain honest answer. Why didn't Crystal Lake Township tell us, the public, it had issued a zoning permit to the ABC Towers? Instead, we're told the tower was all referenced to, that it was exempt from township zoning, and that there was nothing that township could do about. These are statements in the record. We have learned since that none of this is true. As a point of factual record, both City of Frankfurt and ABC Towers' claim statement, they were subject to Crystal Lake Township's own approval. The township did issue a zoning permit quietly and without public notification, certainly lacking in transparency declared to be in its mailing. Under your own ordinance, a permit will only be issued if the project complies with zoning. If exempt, which is now being professed, the township has no authority to issue a permit at all. So which is, if the tower was exempt, why issue a permit? The tower was not exempt, why would we, the public, want, where we want to live? This is deeply personal to me. Bellows Park has been a big part of my family's life for over sixty years. Thanks to the civic-minded generosity of the Bellows family in nineteen thirty-eight, I made friends, I learned to swim, I earned my Red Cross Life Saving Certificate, made money for college as a substitute lifeguard at the Bellows Beach. In the years when there was a concession stand in the park, I spent the nickels earned memorizing Bible verses, that's how we got paid at our house, in its, on its candy can. All of this was possible because the land gifted was specified for use by a park. We now know that ABC Towers' title company missed the nineteen thirty-eight legally filed deed with its restriction for use as a public park. Instead, submitting a nineteen eighty-seven quit plane file for the purpose, solely for the purpose of boundary, partial boundary clarification, and therefore no reference to the original deed's restriction. When notified, ABC Towers not only dismissed the public's concern about their crucial error, they doubled down on the legitimacy of their flawed title work. This is material misreference information. Your zoning ordinance gives you the authority to revoke the permit when the application presented was based on false or incomplete information, which undeniably is the case here. Integrity matters.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Yes?
I've spent many, 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 I don't know, need your name louder. Helen Lutkey Fairchild. You need my address? Yes. Two oh five Lila nine, Franklin. I've spent many, many years at Bellows Park and enjoyed it so much. What if I, when we teach, there's a lot, thank you for marrying me. I have a problem, yeah. Anyway, I appreciate Frankfurt, the people who work for the city, they do a lot of work, they don't get a lot of, um, appreciation. I know they get a lot of slack. But, you know, Frankfurt's trying to do some building, something that needs to be torn down. And I think that there's probably another thing that needs to come down. And I hope that it can be resolved. I would like to see the tower at the side pit. I walk my dog at the side pit. And it'd be nice to get good exceptions, walking my dog. So I can see that working very, very well without premium, if you could just move the tower to a place that is not obstructing a lot of people's view and charging them. So, think about it.
Roger.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes?
Carley, C-A-R-L-E-Y Brunner, here on U, and we are at twenty-three eighty Maple Arch. My question is, why, what, what time was the construction, did it begin? Was it midnight, was it one in the morning? And then if so, why? Why did it begin at that time? Anyone who knows me?
Anyone else to speak in opposition? All right, we're gonna, that part of the meeting behind us, the Todd meeting? Yes?
The zoning administrators are a little active, it was a done deal, my hands were tied, it's not that I feel bad about it because Frankfurt had a fine. Question, did anyone read the Frankfurt lease before ignoring your own rules? Bypassing the, bypassing the plan intuition process, which is step that ignoring the system's itself. Circumventing your citizens' rights, creating the value of our property, endangering the health of our children, and assuring the legacy of the Bellows. The reality is, is Frankfurt, the Frankfurt City of Frankfurt, knew it was not exempt. They knew they needed to admit that because they crafted a clause in that license that says, "If you don't get a permit, this lease is null and void." Moreover, Moreover, they doubled that and envisioned this very meeting, very moment and said, if the permit is revoked, granted not revoked, we're an ABC Tower indemnifies us, we're off the hook. You're left, but the good news is, as the lease is displayed, ABC Tower has gifted you a solution, cost-free. Whether they intentionally duped you by, by not, not including thirty-eight, the original deed, the governance application, or whether their title company screwed up the good. That's why you have title insurance. ABC Tower has title insurance. You were, I'll tell you what happened, you asked the question, what happens if you revoke the, okay? Well, you go, just revoke, revoke the permit, say, hey, resubmit a correct application and we'll put it through the process it's supposed to go through, which is the planning commission and the swap process, which are here and it's spelled out in your documents, it's the bypassing happen. They can do that. And if they don't, they can, they can go cash in their, their title insurance and say, oops, you guys made a mistake, you didn't apply the original deed. You made a mistake, we, we submitted a wrong applicant permit application. Simple. If you don't revoke it, let me tell you what will happen. I'm one of five lawyers in our family that directly affected Frankford. He did this and come conceiving, there's going to be a score of our lawyers who show up and look at that thing and say, my God, I'll volunteer. And what's going to happen is, they'll follow the process that's spelled out in, in, in your rules. We go to Circuit Court and Nata Steve and we'll litigate this and we'll litigate it as long and as far as you want. So, the reality is though, we don't have to do that, you can do the right thing. ABC Tower made a huge mistake by, for whatever reason, not including the original deed, restricted coverage, Jeffrey wires, that that property cannot only use for recreation. It cannot use for recovery. And all these arguments about ownership and whatever, ABC Tower has listed in Bensy County tax record as the owner of that property. And Michigan statute, you know, Frankford lawyer here talks about twenty-eight, or two, three twenty-eight K. You don't talk about people in your deed, I think, Mr. Parker. That says, except, except if property is transferred. Michigan statute, but you talk about the whole country. That might use, that's the kind, we use big word.
What we're gonna do now, we're gonna move to pass the recall. Move through it. We bump up to inside, we have a three-minute, six-minute time room. Then we'll do Mr. Young. Then we hear from the staff.
I don't have an awful lot of recall, I put an awful lot, so to receive the, 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 the. The only thing is, when asked what happens if the permit is revoked, I think there's comment that there will be lawsuits. That doesn't need to be, it's armageddon. Only armageddon happens if ATC can issue exempt. What ATC should do, if you're a red carpet citizen, is go through the process, go to the planning commission, submit the special land agreement, have a public meeting, let the community weigh in on this and do it the proper way. Armageddon law is not the, it doesn't need to be, it can be a thoughtful, deliberate process, which is set for precisely in the purpose.
Couple of things, first of all, I would just want to respond to the lease and the argument that the city can do things that can affect the interest of ATC Tower. But, I mean, I have attached to my finders that I've given to you, the lease, okay? So you can look at that lease. Apparently that lease says, as a lesser, Frankford has no control over the operations of the site, leases ATC Tower, a private out-of-state company, the full authority, to bind operator, lease this tower to whoever chooses. Frankford has nothing more that it can do because it's in a binding agreement. I, I think it's interesting that we're talking about, it's sort of like you rent an apartment and the landlord can come in and make a check to see if the premises are in good order. No, Frankford is not allowed to come into their fenced, barbed-wired fence and, and involve themselves. That is not something the city is permitted to do. So it really is, the, the actual applicable statute needs to imply that they're key role positions. In terms of, there was an issue about thirty days, thirty days really ought to be the time in which we filed an appeal. I would just, and I included this in my summary as well. The thirty day starts after the formal ZAB, public hearing and signed decision. There was no ZAB, no public decision, just a zoning administrator's permit issued privately. Thirty days would be, would start running after a required meaningful public notice and approved meeting minutes. No public notice of any kind, the permit was issued without anyone knowing about it. And we didn't find out about it until February fourteenth. Thirty days should run, citizens knew when the clock started over the formal public action township. We had no knowledge of that. In fact, if you look at your minutes from the July seventeen, two thousand twenty-four meeting, that was the time when Mr. Pucher found out about the binding lease and the whole arrangement. You look in the minutes, that means there's nothing mentioned at that meeting in July about any tower or applicable permit that had been provided. I, I think, well, I, I think Mr. Pucher is a very frank person, he's a good guy. I, I don't think he intended to do anything wrong in how this was handled. But I think when you look at the attachment five, I've included it. It, it is indicative of someone who feels a little offended by the city doing what it did without really letting him know, the township know what was going on. I don't know what the dynamic is between the city of Frankford and, and the township. I think though, that something's maybe not quite right when they're out there doing their deals and the township, zoning administrator, has known anything about it. So he basically, in this letter says, given the preceding research, technically, no zoning permit was required, that's his statement. No special land use review or permit was required, again, false. No public hearing was required. I mean, those are his words, not mine. So how you expect us, when that is the statements that have been made, and suddenly by, you know, telepathy, that the idea that a zoning permit had been issued, it's not public? So I, I do think though, in terms of the emergency content, I do want you to refer to section twenty-six point five H, which states, towers and tenants shall not be regularly permitted as essential services, public utilities or private utilities. I, I mean, I get it, they are wanting to have better cell reception, that is not a reason to put up the tower. Follow the ordinance, follow the rules, do what the ordinances that you have all put in place for our protection, just make sure they do. I would just indicate as well, I did put the post-finding back in my amended sec, section one tab. So at the end, there's what we proposed as findings.
Tom, you're up.
Uh, this is why I have no power. Okay, once you all have posted. Could you explain how, how your position as a zoning administrator allows you to, to permit certain properties, residences, and, and I think this is. Another, another outside of third. I'm not sure, I'm not sure we heard, the rule that allows you to do this on your own? Like you permit a residence without going through the land, through the planning commission? And this is the same kind of thing, isn't it?
Well, unless, each of the doming disclaimer, each covers permit uses by right, permitted accessory uses by right, and special land use. And so if this falls, has a special land use, then it comes, goes through the process for special land use, which is in the order. If someone comes in and they want to zone a district and wants to build a house, and they meet the setback requirements, they zoning permit is issued and there's no notice to anybody or anything else. It's, it's, but that's what happens because it is a permitted use by right. Similarly, if they want to build a garage, a piece of property. There are certain factors they have to meet, like property coverage, such as height, so on and so forth. And if they meet those requirements, the zoning permit has to be issued. And again, no one, no one is given any notice on, on that permit. Similarly here, because this was an exempted situation, and I know that's a point of contention here tonight, but under that situation, where we know notices required, under the ordinance. And there may be something that needs to be corrected.
Anybody else have any questions, like anyone, folks tonight, or any of the presenters? No? Do you have any concerns? We're gonna close the public portion of this evening's meeting now.
Okay, we have one to say no.
Sure.
I'm aware that the, oh, Dr. Nancy's, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm aware that the Crystal Lake Township plans to go and revisit their, all their ordinances because they are unclear. I've been told that by the supervisor. And so what has happened is we have depended on a very unclear ordinance in order to let this go through. So there probably will be clarity, I think the lawyer has made that clearance on the email that was sent to me, between the supervisor and himself. And so these ordinances may not be clear enough to have affected a good outcome in this case. So I would just ask that you take that into account.
Give me. Give me a second. I just got one more. One thing I. Well, we have lots of clarity, because our construction. Motion to decide the price. Appreciate you coming on, going with our report for time three, that the town will, really. Back it up, if things was not clear, I apologize by way of closing it. All of the same, I would like to say, things in the world, I should ask that you about the floor, I want to see what we provide, that is to, 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 to.
Can I just add one other item? No.
You give a motion to close the public portion. All right. Oh, Paul, Paul, you're busy.
Mr. Margot?
Hi.
Yes, Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Uh, and Mr. Michael?
Yes. We come to a time for deliberation. I've got five or six issues, I think everything sort of boils down to. Admit it, I'm not really concerned about the beauty. It's not part of the purpose. We're not talking about the loss of the trillion habitat or things like that. We do have to focus on what's legal, what is as currently an act, semester, and rule from there. But there are issues that are kind of gray as the right, that there are issues, probably the fault of the, the power of Allah, and the lack of statute, but someone can spell the case. And there's several people here that have a lot of experience with case law and taught us to come by. And I'm not a good law enforcement, I'm not an attorney, I didn't expect to make a nation. I did like the idea of criminal law enforcement, because criminal law enforcement, my job's pretty simple, it was up to the attorneys involved, the judges and juries that make the toughest. That said, one of the issues that seems to be hanging in the basket is that government-owned lands exempt under the ordinance. There's a lot of talk about transfer, I believe you made a comment that, that the L S E is paying the property tax?
Okay, and, and the statute two eleven basically was a, a, a statute enacted for assessment of property and how it, the taxes would be collected by the township. So it, it's, it is very clear that in terms of how that would work, ABC Tower is absolutely.
I don't want, I don't want to go into, I'm just playing out what I've got, the issues that, thank you for the, here's the effect statute, I don't know if you want to use it, but you may want to go that way ahead.
Michigan Act twelve, that the lease on thirty-five years, this lease is forty-eight years, is considered a transfer. Mr. Chair, I advise you that he doesn't be your own attorney.
Yes, right, right, that's what I'm saying, these are issues, just like in the current online bar sign taking permission, state university. There are times when you need your municipal attorney. There's a concern that the application was false, that faulty, in that it didn't reflect the wishes of the Bellows family at the time of the transfer deed. Personally, maybe the park does not, in so far, in my opinion, make it a park. That's another issue that could be argued in different directions. Real estate values. I don't know if we can judge real estate values until it actually is a functioning tower and somebody goes to sell their. I'm just, I, I think we can make that allegation or that comment, or we can make that supposition, but that's a supposition. And that's, and I, what I'm saying, my opinion, this is part of deliberation, so you know where I'm coming from and so do the fellow members of the G D, that's a question. Those are probably the top, my primary issue that I, before tossing her out in my head. The most recent, this have received from Mr. Young.
The most recent miss of the received from Mr. Young, who very glad it in my box yesterday. There's a lot of information, new information. And just like everyone else in this room, we all have other lives and this is not an issue that is to be taken, will not be taken lightly. It's important, as I said. Some of you know me as the guy with ladder retrievers who spends an awful lot of time with my dogs at Falls Park every single day. I'm ice out in the free. Important to us all. Great thoughts. That's it. He. Good read. As as a board, we have the support. And we want to use that with like to affirm, deny, or modify the decision made by the zoning administrator after this meeting. We may also postpone our decision. Postponing issues is something I keep for a variety of reasons. Most of them, when there is a need to get the best information we can make and what the best information we can get to make the informed decision that everybody in this room wants us to make. The informed decision. Not necessarily what we see as the right or wrong, but the informed decision. So I'm ready to move. And as I said, there's discussion from the board, just at this point of the meeting. I'm gonna move that we set a meeting for Monday, May fifth, at six. There will not be public comment. We've done our due diligence and gathered information together. And at that, that meeting will be for deliberation only. It will give us time to talk to our attorney. Someone who who's definitely really need a meeting. This is not an issue anybody should shoot from the hip for. It hasn't happened. So I'm moving. We have a meeting, we're just moving to adjourn. We reopen it Monday, May fifth, at six P M here for deliberation, open deliberation. And you're all welcome to attend. I know many of you have traveled. We're not gonna take more comments. I think we have to have public comments that that will be for issues that are not germane in this particular. Somebody has another thing, if they want to come and show up and have their three minute cut five, pardon me for me. Yes. Form of a great idea. Uh, Mr. Wright suggested we don't close this meeting, we recess this meeting, we pick it up at six o'clock and May fifth here. And we will then be begin our public deliberations. And you'll have a chance for us to you'll have a chance to hear what we've got to say in response and hopefully it would be informed information that gives us the ability to make a solid decision.
So I just wanna make some clarification. There's no need to recess this meeting. The public hearing portion is closed by motion of the Z V. So you should end this meeting. There will be another meeting on May fifth. The reason for that is if you recess a meeting, then you can um you can go back into that meeting without notice. I think that instead you should just call a special meeting for Monday. It's eighteen hours notice, you post accordingly on the Township Hall and on the Township's website.
Thank you. I sure appreciate that. All right. So I I know, I'm gonna restate the motion so it makes it more sense because of my rant. I moved that we adjourned this meeting and scheduled a new meeting on Monday, May fifth, at six P M here for Chris Lake Township Hall for deliberations at that time. Do you have a second? Would you call the law?
Michael? Mr. Wright?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. uh, Buck?
Thank you. All, yeah. Thank you all for coming, thank you for your insight. It really helps and I obviously, I really appreciate the longest meeting, but mostly due to your current town courage. Thank you and we'll see you, send it to you next Monday.